Okay, it is six thirty and I'm calling this meeting of the committee of the whole to order. And first motion on the floor is the adoption of the agenda. Motion comes forward from Council Fode, seconded by Council Jameson, that the agenda be adopted and circulated. Any additions, questions, anything about the agenda? Or it's approved? All those in favor? All those opposed? Carried. Next item is declaration of cunary interest in general nature thereof. Does anybody have an interest to declare? Council Lackey.
Yes, I'd like to declare an interest on our staff report six point one, short term rentals. Um, I do collect employment from one, so in. I don't own one, not directly, but I manage one.
Okay. So that interest has been noted and Council Lackey will leave the room at the time of that discussion. Okay. Next item on the agenda is in camera and there is no in camera session this evening. Uh, next item is delegations of presentations and there are none this evening. And we'll move forward to staff reports, planning report SR dash one, one, four, dash twenty-three, short term rentals, survey results, and options for regulation. So I'll ask Council Lackey to leave.
Before I go, I just want to say it was an excellent report, by the way.
Thank you.
And I'm taking my fish. Thank you, Council Jameson.
Taking sustenance while you go, we'll come and get you. My office is available if you want. Um, so, uh, planning report. So do you want to go through the report and then read the motion afterwards, or would you rather I read the motion?
Um, that's up to you. I would like to give a bit of a overview before.
Why don't you do the overview and then I'll read the motion?
Certainly. Um, so thank you through you. Um, the report that's being presented to count or to committee of the whole this evening regarding short term rentals um, is a summary of work that's been done with respect to what's going on in other jurisdictions. The summary of the survey that was done last summer, um, the results of the survey came back quite close in terms of regulating versus not regulating with the higher amount. I believe it was fifty-one percent recommended that short term rentals should be regulated, forty-nine percent that they should not be regulated. Um, in reviewing the survey results, the majority of the complaints or concerns regarding short term rentals revolved around noise impacts, party houses, improper use of the properties, uh, and ability to ensure that they're in compliance with bylaws. Um, based on the summary of the results and looking at the number of complaints that have been received by the township, which still remains to be very low. Um, it's the recommendation of staff that additional regulation at this point be done through additional bylaw enforcement and further bylaw enforcement. Um, I would note that last summer council approved an administrative monetary penalty bylaw. Through that bylaw, we are able to levy fines and we have levied fines on properties. Um, so just for council's information, currently we can levy a fine of up a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars for noise, uh, depending on the type of infraction. With respect to long grass on property, we can issue a fine of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, failure to maintain a septic system is three hundred dollars. And a number of residents exceeding permitted amount is a hundred and fifty dollars. So we are currently able to levy fines under our AMP bylaw. The bylaw includes property standards, safe properties, noise and canine. So we will be building on this as we go, but currently staff's recommendation is that we maintain this approach. Um, the report does recommend that we could amend the bylaws to include higher fines for second and subsequent offenses. So if there is a property that's a repeat offender, we could continue to levy higher fines with those amendments. Uh, in addition to that, it's also recommended that we do further education with the public in terms of how to report a bylaw enforcement complaint. If we had a higher volume of complaints, licensing might be the way to go. But given the costs associated with going down the road of licensing, at this point, it's our recommendation that we go with further enforcement and education and monitor that. So the recommendation also includes that staff would report back to council before the end of the year with a summary of complaints or concerns that were received over the summer. So we can evaluate the level of enforcement that has taken place to determine if it's the right time to pursue licensing and if council's prepared to go down that road.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Just one thing I would note, there was an item of correspondence received this afternoon, uh, that was sent to all of council. Just to run through the comments in that just to answer council's questions, um, with respect to zoning. Um, yes, some municipalities have done zoning, some municipalities have done official plan amendments. Based on our review, licensing is the most effective way to go. Uh, you can put a lot more requirements in a licensing bylaw in terms of number of people and specifics around a property. So, um, that's why no zoning bylaw amendments are proposed at this time. With respect to legal insurance and financial liability, uh, for use of private roads. What we did find is many municipalities do allow short term rentals on private roads and private lanes. So that's why there's no recommendations with respect to that. Um, with respect to concerns around septic capacity, the township does regulate septic. We have the authority now under the building code to regulate it. If there's any concerns at any point in time about a septic system on a property in terms of whether it is not functioning appropriately or whether is whether there's work occurring without the appropriate permits, they can always submit a concern to the building department and we will send inspectors out to look into the situation. And the fourth question was with respect to past by law violations and the township not being able to issue fines. Um, as I've explained, last summer, we did pass a bylaw and we are now able to levy fines. Uh, with respect to noise complaints on the weekend, um, we do work with the OPP. And if there's an after hours call, the OPP is the per is the body to call to follow up on noise issues. Uh, that being said, should council determine you want more information with respect to after hours calls on weekend? We could look into what's involved in arranging for a contract arrangement for after hour services. Uh, and that addresses the questions in the email.
So I'm going to put the motion on the floor and then we can have some discussions. So the motion comes forward from Council Jameson, seconded by Council Maybe. That the committee of the whole recommends that council directs staff to proceed with amendments to the administrative monetary penalty bylaw and associated bylaws to implement increased fines for second and subsequent offenses to address concerns identified by the public regarding noise, property standards and safe properties to address survey input received regarding short term rentals. And that the staff prepare communication materials and update the township website with information regarding short term rentals and that bylaw enforcement to raise awareness regarding the bylaw enforcement and how to how to report concerns to the township for enforcement. And further that staff continue to monitor the number of bylaw enforcement complaints received by the township and report back to council in Q four, twenty twenty-three regarding the number of type, number and type of complaints received regarding short term rentals, actions taken, and with any updated recommendations regarding regulating, monitoring or enforcement of short term rentals. Motion is now on the floor, up for discussion. Counsel Maybe and then Counsel Fode.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, again, very good report, uh, did read it to all and, uh, it had some interesting points, um, and showed a lot of options that other communities have taken to try to address this issue. And, uh, I agree with the planner that I only know of three known households or residences that have that has come to this table, uh, to be made aware of. So again, increasing the fines, I think, uh, exponentially on each complaint to an individual property would be the way to try to mitigate them from moving and keeping, keeping them at bay. And as the, as the fines increase, maybe it will become clear that they need to vet the people that are renting the property a little bit more to make sure that, uh, they stay within the standards that are required by all the all the bylaws that we already have in place, uh, no matter where, whether it be safety, building, uh, set a septic or whatever. So I, I strongly would go for increasing the fines exponentially so that we try to mitigate that. Thank you.
Counsel Fode.
Thank you, worship through you to our director of planning. Um, like my colleagues, I want to commend you on a thorough uh, report supplied by us or supplied to us rather by you and staff. Uh, it covers a lot of bases. Uh, the survey pretty much speaks to itself. Uh, the couple of highlights I took from that survey are the graph showing that approximately two to one of the residents answering were permanent residences opposed to seasonal, which nothing against our seasonal residents, of course, but perhaps the permanent residents would be there from the very early stages if it was a seasonal rental and well into the fall. So from there and, uh, and then the, uh, the actual complaints were minimal compared to the number of people that actually have, uh, have these, uh, short term rentals. Uh, when the survey came out, I didn't keep accurate math because I didn't need to, but in my head, I had conversations with twelve to fifteen people on the street and here and there that just wanted to bend an ear for a moment. All those people, whether it was twelve or fifteen, were all in favor of short term rentals. They said they were aware of a few garbage issues where there might have been more people on the property and therefore it wasn't a noise issue in that case, but perhaps that they didn't have enough garbage cans or bags available uh, for night critters as such. So they're aware of some of the problems, but, um, just to shorten it up, I, I think the staff have this fully under control and I'd like to give you the benefit out of, uh, of running with your plan here through till fall and, and see what we get. Thank you.
Counsel Gro.
Thank you and through you, uh, your worship. Uh, the issue of, um, concerning these ghost hotels, a commercial use. Uh, it's never been made clear to me. I've read that some people have suggested they had, uh, lawyers look into that and it was deemed commercial usage. Um, have we done that? I can't remember if we did or not. So what would be our position on therefore land use and so on as a commercial outfit?
Um, through your worship, the legal opinion we received was that it is a residential use. Um, because it's in a residential dwelling, the intensity of the use being in a rental. It's, it's still a cottage or a single family home. Technically it's built as a single detached dwelling, depending on the form of housing you're looking at. But the intensity of use isn't such that it's a hotel or a banquet center so that it continues to be considered as a residential use.
And, uh, just to be clear, with our new, um, administrative monetary policy, uh, the fines are attached to the property. Are they given to the homeowner of registration or are they given to the, um, renter?
The three, the fines are levied on the owner of the property.
Okay. And one last question. Um, have we considered or are we in the process of considering additional bylaws that specifically target short term rentals without without licensing, without, um, uh, without, yeah, without licensing?
Through your, the only way we could have a specific bylaw to target short term rentals would be a licensing bylaw.
Okay.
So at this point, that's not being record.
And I'd also like to add, uh, that I thought the report was, uh, well written and I would encourage the public to read it. I think it would provide a lot of, uh, uh, fill in the gaps for a lot of folks. So thank you very much.
Counsel Jameson.
Um, just because we've been at this long time, so I appreciate this coming forward and I agree with the others around the table that it's an excellent report. Um, the education piece seems to be our biggest challenge here, and I know that most of the complaints that I I get as a counselor up, up, up in the great north there is to do with, um, people who live there full time, doing all the various things that people think short term rental people do, the noise and the garbage and the cars and the overuse. So, uh, I think the, the next stage is to see those foreign fines come forward. That is second, third and fourth. Um, um, you know, uh, infractions dealt with as severely as possible because to the point about being an SDR, uh, we're just not seeing the volume. We know that, but we're seeing enough volume in the general kind of behaviors that we could use these tougher fines just to satisfy that need alone. So I appreciate the report and I hope we can move to that next step.
I'll, I'll have Counsel Grohl follow up and then I'll have Counsel Kelman.
Actually, it was, uh, all yield.
Okay.
On that one.
Go ahead.
Have a few words after. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and through you to the director. Um, I have seen, uh, stories on the media about short term rentals in some municipalities taking away from affordable housing. And I'm assuming those are more urban centers and I know that the, in the Arcadis report, they touch on that, that it's probably not an issue here and you would concur with that.
Through you, yes, I would agree with that. Uh, the majority of what we're seeing are cottages. Thank you.
Counsel Gro.
Yes, and thank you, uh, your worship. Um, in following up on, uh, Counselor Jameson's thoughts, I also have, uh, spoken to a number of people who realize the necessity of some kind of a rental in this township. Um, there are venues in this township that do not have enough, uh, or cannot provide their clients with enough, um, uh, hotel rooms and so on, short of municipalities outside of our jurisdiction, such as Ganonacway or Brockville. Um, so it's been brought to my attention many times that short term rentals are quite essential. Uh, and we do not have enough that are taking away from the, um, overall supply of housing in this township, in my opinion. Um, and also I do have major concerns, which is highlighted in this report, which I do encourage the public to read, that it doesn't strike me, there's been one township that has started down the road of licensing that's ever been happy with it. They're always, uh, re-tweaking it and, and the cost of them just seems to soar. So I just did some quick math in my head. If you had a hundred short term rentals and you were trying to cover some costs so that the general taxpayer is not funding a necessary, um, regulations, I guess, the, uh, the bylaws, the bylaw officers and so on. You might be up around two thousand dollars per on a yearly basis. Um, so we, I don't really want to go down that rabbit hole yet. I would rather see us, uh, in agreement with this report, see what comes up in the next few months and, uh, and educate the public, educate those owners and let the, um, let the bylaw fines or the, uh, the administrative monetary policy work. And lastly, it may take a part-time contract. Uh, uh, bylaw officer. So I wouldn't mind if by next week, if not too much pressure, uh, we could answer the question, is that, uh, possible? Are there requirements, certification requirements for such person? Um, and the only way it could pay, once again, is if you are charging the appropriate people for it. Um, I'd just like a few words on that by next week, if possible. If not, you can wait down the road. So thank you.
I think she might be able to answer that question right now.
Um, just for clarification, when you say additional part-time, are you talking about expanding the level of service outside of regular hours or just additional ser- okay?
I'm not aware of what the regular hours are, so.
Office hours currently. So currently our bylaw enforcement officer works nine to four thirty. Um, we don't have evening and weekend enforcement. Um, now I have spoken with, so I do have Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement on a retainer. Should we receive a call with respect to an injured dog after hours so that we have somebody that can go and address that situation? I have had a conversation with them. Um, and this is just, it's not formalized, it's not a formal quote, however, uh, to have a bylaw enforcement officer on call, should there be a noise? Um, noise complaint after hours, I did ask that question. It would be approximately forty dollars an hour plus mileage and a minimum three hour call in. Um, so dependent on the number of calls that were received, the, it would depend on what the costs are. So.
And just to clarify, so the contract that we have is just limited to, um,
It's limited to after hour calls for animals.
Animals. But, but we have.
Expand the scope.
We could expand the scope of the contract should we require to and would not require us hiring another individual or body even on a part-time basis. But rather pay for the privilege of a call in, um, and as per forty dollars an hour, three hour minimum. And, and I think that addresses the issue rather than having to hire a whole new person and at least potentially have the coverage we need for this summer to see how things go.
That, that would be, if I might, in the conversation, um, would that be something that we should get after? While we are formulating or seeing what public input we're getting regarding, I'll call them nuisance, okay, nuisance issues, for lack of a better word. While we take the months to put that together, could we not at that same time and, uh, have perhaps, is it possible to put this, uh, to make this additional enforcement for after hours, not just about, um, pets and dogs and so on, unfortunately, but, uh, address some of these issues that we see in this report? Is that possible?
I could bring something forward to council for your consideration next week. Does need to scope it out. Oh, yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks.
I can certainly have something ready for council on June nineteenth.
So if we approve the, if we were to approve the motion that sits before us now, that doesn't preclude her from bringing back a subsequent, um, augmentation to the existing contract and just for further clarification. Okay. Okay. So any other questions? Do you have another comment?
Procedural, if, if we're going to follow on Counselor Grohl's, uh, vision here. Do we, do we need to have a direction to, to staff to do the second piece or what's, what's the route to go?
So why don't we amend the motion? Um, if someone wanted to amend it to ask, uh, to further that staff look into expanding contract with Frontenac. Um, and law and bylaw enforcement, sorry, what is their official name?
Um, would it be possible for me to bring an amended motion forward at the next meeting, subject to council dr- so I can, because we will need to allocate budget and other.
So you want this?
I need more information. If it's possible to table it tonight so that I can bring forward an amended motion at the next meeting.
Well, okay, but does that mean we're into July before we actually pass the thing?
No, because it's council.
We can do it next on the nineteenth?
It would be an amended motion as opposed to a notice of motion. So I would amend the motion that's currently on the table um, to include information with respect to after hours calls and the costs associated with in budget allocation.
Okay, which means on the nineteenth, we can
Yes.
Put that puck in the net. Is that, is that right? Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
So are there any other questions from council? If not, I'll recognize Erin Braidford, who has their hand up on virtual meeting. So we'll just, we'll unmute her. Uh, the clerk is just doing that. Go ahead, Erin.
Thank you, Mayor, through you to council and staff. Uh, thank you for the breadth of work done on this topic. As you recall, on behalf of Killenbeck Lane Association, we first came to you in, uh, April of twenty twenty-one on this issue with a delegation presentation. We also submitted a formal letter, which was in the minutes, uh, June ninth, twenty twenty-one. As the planner mentioned at the start of this meeting, we did have the courtesy of submitting a list of questions through our new ward to Counsel, Counsel Kelman with the request that those questions be read and or addressed. Um, I'll express my own personal, um, disappointment that they actually weren't read, that the members of the public who may be participating or interested in this context at the meeting or media, uh, have not had the ability to have the questions read. It was a quick brush under the rug answer at best by the planner at the beginning of this meeting. Um, so it'll just, that's a comment from myself personally, after so much work after and time has gone into this important issue that has affected our lives drastically for a very long time. Uh, the most important issue I think that, um, we want to raise and, and I guess I'll respectfully in that regard ask that the questions, questions that we submitted as written be included in the minutes or as a reference document for the benefit of those who didn't have a chance to read them. Um, but the most important thing I think is that, um, the report does not adequately address the issue of a commercial property operating in a residential zone. A ghost hotel is one where an absentee investor owner, often living out of our township, buys a property for the sole purpose of rental income. Revenue Canada recognizes this as a business activity. The township's current zoning bylaw, and thank you to Counsel Grohl for asking the question, I still, uh, it'd be great to see the legal opinion. Um, but the, the actual township's current zoning bylaw recognizes this as a business activity. There are references within which are documented in our letter of July, uh, ninth, twenty twenty-one whereby the zoning bylaw recognizes and identifies what is a bed and breakfast and a bed and breakfast, and I'll just read, is limited to the total amount of floor area used and devoted for the home business up to three bedrooms versus the whole home. We're not recognizing the fact that there is a spectrum of short term rental activity spanning from, I rent out a room in my house for two weeks a year that I otherwise live in versus I have purchased a property that nobody lives in, has a lockbox on the door and people come and go as a accommodation for the traveling public. And that also is a quote from the zoning bylaw under the commercial use section and definition. So I guess it's just, uh, a recognition that this is a zoning issue and our delegation believes that increased fines will not resolve the issue. The issue needs to be addressed as a commercial business operating in a residential zone that is impacting, affecting adversely the lives of people residing in that area. Thank you.
Thank you for your submission. Are there any other comments or questions to be made? Counsel Gro.
Thank you and through you, your worship. Um, I wonder if the participants here, if someone rented a house on a private lane, having read the letter and the issues that were brought forward and someone has, um, and that family rents, and I'll call it a family and they have seedews and they have dogs and they have everything that families can have and they're on a private lane. Does that change the concerns? You can still have nuisance complaints. Again, that's my summation of them. You can still have all of those things occurring. So for my benefit, can someone define the difference between a three hundred and sixty-five day rental with someone who may be quote unquote, less than desirable on your, on the street versus, um, a rental that is, uh, short term and I, I do understand the difference between thirty days and three hundred and sixty-five. But the liability would be the same, would it not, on a private lane? Whether it's my propane guy going down the road or whether it's a renter going down that road. Those are all issues that I, it's very unclear in my mind and I've seen these come up before and I don't understand uh, the difference. So thank you.
So your question, Counsel Grohl, is for specifically or is it a hypothetical?
Was my thoughts in reading the letter that was presented uh, and its recognition of the issues in that letter, of which we did cover the conflict of interest. We did cover the OPP complaints. We did cover the, uh, Provincial Offense Act versus the administrative policy. We did cover the septic. We did cover, uh, the commercial use that was brought forth. So to if there's further argument, I'd like to hear them. Thank you.
Are there any comments from council on this? I don't see any hands up. And I don't see any further hands up on the screen. Okay, I have Terry Campbell who's put their hand up. So there you go, Terry. Um, you can unmute yourself. There you go.
Great. Thank you to you. Uh, to answer your question or to just put some perspective on it, the difference being between having, uh, a neighbor that, you know, has all that stuff. Having uh, a neighbor that, you know, has all that stuff. Anyway, is the constant revolving door. You've got to set guidelines and rules with new people every weekend, I live right next door to one. Or we have a cottage right next door to one. And the issue is um, setting guidelines and rules, asking people to be respectful of our own pri- private property. Um, i- if you've got a neighbor that's doing all that, and usually with, on a road. There's some kind of association where you can come to an agreement where, okay. We're going to do things at this time, we're going to respectfully not seadue at dinner hour or do. You know, waterski in front of the, the cottages that um, when kids are swimming and so on like that. When you've got a constant revolving door of people coming, going every weekend, you can't. It's, it's impossible to regulate that, and that's the big issue. You know, and people come with pets. Um, if, if you had a neighbor that had dogs, you could, you could set rules, you, they would know they had, the dogs have to be tied up. Um, they would ask permission to, to come and pet your dog. But when you've got um, new people every weekend coming by, we have three dogs and they do not leave our property. But we have people coming over to, to pet the dogs without permission, or they bring dogs and don't tie them up, and then our three, all three dogs have been attacked. On three separate occasions because the renters didn't follow the rules. It wasn't the, the owner's um, fault because she sets up the, the rules and vets her, her guests very well. But not everybody listens, and it's just the, the constant annoying, having to go over the ground rules. And it get, it makes it uncomfortable because my wife and I are friendly people. And we, we like to socialize and so on. But it's, it's to the point now where we, we hate every weekend that we go because now we have to. Set the rules with the people next door and hope that we don't have any confrontation, that's the difference. So I, I hope that clarifies your question, uh.
It does.
And if I might, thank you very much for stepping up with that. Um, because really I'm just trying to make a sort of a technical argument that. You know, to, to, to regulate and say, hey, you can't have an STR on a, on a private road because of liability. Well, to me, the liability exists anyway, every time someone who's not a, a, a member of your association. I'm not sure if that's the case, but could be the propane truck rolls over, I don't know. But thank you, I appreciate that point of view, thank you.
Okay, so I think councils had their chance and as have the members of the public, so I'm going to call the question on this matter. Um, uh, sorry, not call the question, but have the motion tabled. Uh, to for, come back with further clarification in regards to enforcement. Um, so that we can further debate it at the council meeting and finalize it should we wish to move forward. Okay, so um, mover is councillor Jameson, are you okay to have that tabled? And then councillor maybe, are you second, so, Jameson? Maybe. All those in favor of tabling the motion to the following council meeting? All those opposed, that's carried. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is moved by councillor Gurrell, seconded by councillor Kelman. That the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment. Oh, sorry, we forgot about Mr. Lackey, I got going, my apologies. I'll hold up here. I know, I know. We save the best for last for you to come in. So I'll start over again, the next motion is in regards to um, planning report SR dash. One one five dash twenty three, file number D fourteen dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero four. Excuse me. Moved by councillor Gurrell, seconded by councillor Kelman, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment. Touched a planning report SR dash one one five dash twenty three. As exhibit F to rezone the subject lands from rural RU zone to shoreline residential RS zone. In the zoning bylaw number zero seven dash zero seven nine, as amended to fulfill a condition of provisional approval for consent applications. B ninety seven dash twenty two and B ninety eight dash twenty two. Discussion on the motion. This was discussed at our planning meeting prior to committee of the whole. I see no hands up, so I will call the question, all those in favor. All those opposed, and it's carried. Okay, unfinished business, so is there any unfinished business? I have councillor Fordy and then councillor maybe.
Thank you, thank you, your worship, through you to uh, our director of operations, is there any update on the uh? Blood damage on uh, Highway thirty two a few months back, have you heard anything from the county on that?
Through your worship, um, at this point, I have not heard anything from the county. Um, I know there was a discussion with CN, but that's, that's all that I've heard at this point.
At, just that I can add to that councillor Fordy, so I did follow up at the last uh, committee of the whole meeting uh, with county. They are furthering the claim with CN, that our contact person, uh, Melanie Knowles, who used to be with the county, is no longer there. But they've um, reassigned the person to follow up on that. Um, I did speak with Mr. Gilbert as well about his personal property uh, on the weekend. Um, and that they have been given assurances with, um, from the county that they would be included in that claim. Um, I am there this week and I will continue to put my foot on that gas pedal. Um, but just to add insult to injury. Um, on the weekend when the fire was happening on Joyful Side Road and the proper, or the traffic was. Rerouted and not everybody was following the EDR, there was a number of, there's. A large amount of traffic going across that road and you can see even the patch job is really deteriorating. Um, the amount of work that the um, homeowner has done to rehabilitate his lawn is, um, I believe. He told me that it was about twenty thousand dollars worth of work. Um, so that will all be submitted as part of the claim with CN. But the claim will have to wait until the road is rebuilt, which is in the plans, my understanding here in the not so distant future. Um, so I'm not sure where it is on the schedule, but I can also find that out.
Great, thank you.
Any, uh, councillor maybe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I know I had that one on my list too, that uh, Mr. Gilbert's lawn is looking great, he's doing a great job of it. And what uh, maybe uh, when they rebuild the road, they can uh, ask CN to raise a bridge by six inches, make transports go underneath it. Um, on the list of our uh, website here, I noticed that it has a list of all the councillors. But our new councillor is not on that list yet, so maybe that can be addressed.
It's because the clerk was on vacation.
Yeah, you know, she, you know, had, had to take a little bit of a break, so it, it's all good, it's been a busy time for her, but that's all good. Um, and my other one was for the director of planning, since he's here, any word on the fire hall plans, how they're coming along?
The director of operation.
Oh, that's what I meant.
I was like, huh, he got a new, uh, he got a new job.
I, I, yeah, I did that last time too, I think.
Thank you through your worship. Um, I appreciate the comments that you provided and I forwarded that through to the consultants, uh, we've had another meeting. Um, they've provided the, the, the room sheets. Uh, sat down with fire and went over their list and then with IT as well. And they're supposed to be coming back to us in the next couple of weeks or something.
Okay. Councillor Jameson.
Um, under unfinished business, finished business, we have flashing lights on Lunters Road. Front of the school, so I'd like to thank the effort of our operations director pushing that along for us. And it's finally there. And on the matter of unfinished business, I'd like to know, because we had an earlier discussion. Uh, about Lunters and Furnace Falls, uh, the bridge. Um, and the safety um, ideas that were being discussed with respect to. That bridge and slowing people down and generally helping people understand that people walk across that bridge. And I just wonder if the county is moving at all in that direction, your worship.
Um, nothing specific other than the rehabilitation of the bridge, however. Um, the director of operations would be better equipped to speak to any other additional safety measures that I could suggest.
Thank you through your worship. I received an email from the county stating that as part of the design, they were not going to include pedestrian facilities across the bridge. Um, because there weren't pedestrian facilities leading to and from the bridge. Um, so I, I pointed them to their uh, their active transportation plan that they have approved in the last uh, year. That shows that paved shoulders approaching the bridge are what is anticipated and expected. Um, so at that point, I, I did receive a, an email back from the county stating that uh, well, it will not be included as part of the design. They will work with us in the future to include a pedestrian facility across the bridge.
This is beginning to sound like flashing lights. Uh, five years from now, I'm not going to be here, I'd like to get this done soon. Um, in terms of what we would do on that bridge. Is there, has there been any discussion, but first of all, the county needs to know. Uh, the future is now, so we need to get it done now, not next year. So I appreciate if your worship would go back to the county and rattle the cage a little bit, see if anybody's in the cage. To do the work, but in the meantime, are there plans to the director of operations? Any kind of plans sitting anywhere about how to slow down traffic when people are walking across that bridge?
Um, in my previous discussions with, with the county. Um, conversations about knockdown barriers, we have to accommodate the, the traffic, the pedestrians. As well as oversized vehicles that use that bridge. Uh, that's the main thoroughfare for uh, for Tackeberry Construction. So it's something that needs to be in place that will allow for, for safe access for the pedestrians. As well as accommodate the, the oversized vehicles. And what was spoken of were the uh, like curb barriers, the, the low concrete curb barriers. With the knockdown upright posts on top of that, which will indicate uh, a physical separation from the pedestrians to the uh. To the motorists, but at the same time accommodate the, the oversized vehicles of, of, for equipment. And that, that seemed to be agreed to in um, in theory. Uh, that would, that would require more conversations with the county in order to implement that, that plan.
So basically, I'm willing to commit along with director of operations to have further conversation with them before they execute anything. Uh, regarding, because that pedestrian bridges, the, or, there is no pedestrian bridge. That is the bridge, that is the only way for people to get one side of the village to the other. It's, it has to be accommodated now during the actual design.
I will reach out to the county again and report back in July.
Councillor Fordy, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, through you to the uh, director of operations, on the same subject, the knockdown. Bullards you're referring to are the flexible type, I assume, the stand up flexible type? Okay, and you had indicated there's a, there's a cement bottom to them. Uh, is it a designated height or is, can that be subject to the will of those installing it? All I'm thinking is, um, the familiarity with over width vehicles. I'd hate to see anything solid more than sixty eight inches off the ground. Because the current rule for the bottom side of a low riding trailer is minimum of four inches underneath. Some of the better equipped newer trailers are not much more than four inches of deck, so you're only looking at eight inches and then it could be whatever width the road would allow. So if we were to put something solid above eight inches, I'd be afraid that we'd be. Doing one of two things, removing them all in one sweep or, or doing damage to roads that were given right away. Just a comment.
Okay, any other comments or questions on, in regards to other business? Or unfinished business?
And through you, through you, your worship, I see that the burn ban was put on today. And when I went looking on the website, it wasn't yet obvious. Um, maybe I was not looking in the right places, but I think we could do, maybe uh, ask the appropriate. Folks to push that out there a little harder, thank you.
Okay, I know that I've shared it on my social media page, I, I know you had posted it as well, I'm not sure councillor Kelman, I think you had as well. So I think it will be a collective effort that we really have to push over the next little while, the forecast that I checked doesn't. Look like we're getting rain till Saturday, Sunday, which is quite worrisome uh, with the amount of uh, fire that's happening north of here. Which is why I understand that the air quality is so poor here today. Um, very concerned about our neighbors and friends just north. Um, and we know that we could be in a similar situation, we've already had the fire trucks. Not sure if it's a grass fire or not, they've left here lights and sirens earlier this evening, so. Um, just a word to the wise, to all of our taxpayers, visitors, there's a total burn ban. There is no campfires, there are no fires whatsoever. Um, and um, there will be fines levied in the event that you are caught burning. Uh, in a burn ban, but to your point councillor Gurrell, we will do what we can to um, heighten the amount of education. And communication between now and when that is lifted. Okay. Any other, other business? I see none, so forward any notices of motion, any notices of motion? Notices of motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll go on to the mayor's update. So June is Pride Month and Pride Month is dedicated to uplifting and celebrating diverse voices within the two S L. G B T Q I A plus community, nailed it. Uh, it's hard now to, to say it all and make sure that we get everybody identified here. So we all have the right to belong and no matter our gender or sexual identity, we welcome all people to this community. Um, you will notice that we are flying the pla- the pride flag out on our digital screen and will be doing so for the month of June, so. Um, very proud to be in an, living in an inclusive community. Uh, June is also seniors month, seniors month is an opportunity to recognize and acknowledge the amazing seniors that live across our township. And the positive impact they have made in our lives. The theme for seniors months this, this year is working for seniors, which recognizes the importance of seniors keeping active, well and safe in their communities. Our annual touch a truck event, which was held on May the twenty fifth, was in support of the Roll Aid Food Bank in Sealese Bay. And the township raised, drumroll, a thousand dollars and collected two bins for the local organizations and businesses. And, sorry, food donations that will go to help those in need in our community. And thank you to the local organizations and businesses and staff for making this a very successful event. I personally would like to thank staff, um, and I'm sure I echo and I know there's been a number of comments made. It was a great event, it was great to see the school kids here earlier in the day, everything looked wonderful, but. I know that I appreciate all the staff, but especially the public work staff, when they're starting very early in the morning, they stayed on. I believe until sixth o'clock to put away equipment and made sure the equipment looked lovely and shiny, um. And uh, and to also to our partner organizations OPP, EMS, Fire, GAN have their ladder truck here. Um, and uh, to McKenna and Tracy who did all the photos. Um, that came and the county who are also here with their uh, equipment uh, and their staff. So it takes a whole village to pull those events off and it was a great way to showcase. Um, our operators and our people uh, who use these big machines every day. So the next item is another thank you to all, everyone who attended our community improvement plan. Um, open house, our public open house that was on the thirty first of May, the survey is still out to gather input for the community improvement plan. And it's open until the sixteenth of June, please visit our website to access the survey. And I just want to underscore this because it's very important that all people from all different age groups, genders. Family members, seniors, what have you, um, put their input in because everybody sort of has a different idea of what they need at different stages of their life. And if we're going to have a comprehensive community improvement plan, it is imperative that we have the feedback from. A very diverse uh, cross section of our community, so if you've filled out the survey, send it to three or four of your friends here in the township, ask them to fill it out. Um, and hopefully we can get a, a really robust return. Um, I was pleased to have the people that came um, at the open house. And the suggestions were very helpful, I found the ones that were made and sticky notes that were put on there. Um, the next item is to keep an eye out for our. Um, the next item is to keep an eye out for our new Township Times publication for July to September. It will be sent out in the mail this week, so um we're, we changed the format a little bit, so it it won't look the same as the blue paper. Um, it'll look a little bit different, so keep your eye out and let us know what you think of it. And just to reiterate again, the burn ban must not burn at this point in time. We do not want to be in a situation where our volunteers um and our firefighters have to be doing that for any great length of time. Um, so we have a bye week um as far as uh council next week. It's the following week, just to remind everybody. Uh, the last thing I'd like to um bring up is in regards to the the nineteenth, yeah. Um, there is a speed reduction that we've already discussed here at at the township level that we forwarded on to the county in regards to County Road Three uh for Prince Street. Um, there is a um, it's coming to county on Wednesday. Um, the understanding is is that the, in order to get the speed limit down to forty kilometers an hour here in the village, there needs to be an approach reduction. So coming into the village, we would see uh speed reductions, further speed reductions in the north part of the village, I believe. Um, so I I would encourage you to all read that report because uh there's some things that might have been unintended consequences, but are important to the village people here. Um, and those of us who drive through um County Road Three on a regular basis, so please read that report and provide me with any feedback you may have. Any other announcements before I move on to adjournment? Just want to say welcome again to our newest counselor, Counselor Kelman uh from Ward Two, and we're very excited to have you join us and uh we hope that that we totally um faked you out on this particular meeting. They're never usually this short, so you got off very easy this particular time, but if I understand correctly, council is pretty heavy, so bring snacks. Um. Go ahead, Counselor Gurrell.
I was just gonna say uh and through you and with your worship that uh we had the memorial services for Gerald Huck.
Oh, yes.
On um Saturday. And today there was a memorial service for a resident from um uh Ascot, Ward Three, Mr. Hugh Greitmeyer, who lived to the age of one hundred and one. And he was a wonderful gentleman and uh loved and revered by many. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for bringing up Mr. Huck's uh celebration of life. Uh, Jerry Huck was a business owner in the municipality for a number of years, but also a very active member um on a number of committees. He was one of the founding members of Thousand Islands Chamber of Commerce. Um, and was very quick to let everybody know uh what his thoughts were on certain policies, whether it be municipal, provincial or federal. Um, when I was first elected, he was one of the first people to take me out to lunch and tell me exactly what he thought and uh and I will definitely miss him and uh my thoughts are with his family who it's been six months or more since he's passed, uh December twenty-fifth, I believe. Um, but uh he leaves a a long legacy of a successful business and a successful family, so thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, I'll go forward with the adjournments. Moved by Counselor Kelman, seconded by Counselor Gurrell of the committee of the whole adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed?